Each council member and department head will receive a copy of the report. And the complete audit report will also be posted to the city's website. The fiscal year 2018 budget worksheets have been distributed to each of the departments, department heads, and the staff has begun preliminary work on revenue estimates for the coming year. Each council member will be sent a copy of the budget calendar for the preparation of the fiscal year 18 budget, once each departmental meeting has been set. Please be sure to mark your calendars for Saturday, March 4th, which is the tentative date for the annual budget retreat. You were also sent a copy of the November 30th, 2016 financial statements on December 30th. And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Sure.
So along that with this budget calendar, so now speaking with the mayor, and we've talked about this from last year to this year, we would like the committees to be a part of those individual meetings. So I'm going to be sending you out those dates to see what times that you would be available and to do that. So I know some of you work and do other things like that. So if we give you some dates, if you would please just respond back to us about, you know, what is the best times for you, and we'll try to schedule those around your schedule the best we can, so you can attend.
Sounds good.
And it probably is a four-hour kind of thing, so it's not going to be a couple hours. So just plan on a four-hour block, if we're lucky.
That's true.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it does take some time, but it is so worthwhile to see every part and piece of these budgets as it's getting put together. All right, Mr. Hahn, did you have anything?
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that the mayor brought up Tim Horton's. Next month is our business spotlight. We've got Agador's may be our business spotlight. They were scheduled two or three times last year, as last year they celebrated their 75th anniversary in the city of Earlanger. Due to different times that they couldn't make, so they're going to be here next month. So that's, just wanted to mention that. There's a lot going on economic development-wise that we're working on, Mark and the mayor and I. So hopefully we'll be here and you'll be seeing some of that come forward here over the next couple of months, hopefully. So.
Thank you. All right. Mrs. Pitts?
Yes. I just want to verify, is it January 12th that they're opening?
January 12th, yes.
Thursday at 2:00?
Thursday at 2:00.
At 2:00?
It's 2:00 PM.
It's 2:00 PM.
There's a lot of inquiring minds that want to know.
Yes.
Yeah, a lot of people say, "What the heck is it?"
Oh, I've been bugged to death. "I hear it's going in, when's it open, and when's it open?" I'm like, "I have to eat these doughnuts, I keep hearing about them."
Yeah.
If you're a coffee drinker, their coffee's supposed to be really, really...
Supposed to be...
If you're a coffee drinker, it's one of the... Yeah.
They're the Starbucks of Canada.
That's a great way of putting it, yeah. Because they do have lunch as well.
Yes, they've got sandwiches. It's...
Yeah, that's a good way of saying it.
Starbucks of Canada.
Sure. Sure. The amazing thing, the acoustics in this room, we can hear you great, like you're just speaking in a regular voice, and I don't know why. I mean, is everybody else?
Yeah.
Here? All right. We'll work on speaking up. Thank you, Dave. All right. Oh, are you? Okay. Yes, you are. Go ahead, yeah. Codes building and zoning.
Yes. Nothing there. I sent out the, an email with the report for the building and zoning report, as well as the codes enforcement report. So you have that, and I also put a copy of it. I apologize for email not being till today, but due to the way the days or the holidays were falling, it's just kind of the way it occurred. But I put a hard copy in front of each one of you today. So unless you have any questions of that, that's about all I have.
Yeah, that's incredible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lot happening right now. It's a wonderful thing. All right, next we've got progress in revitalization. Mr. Fields?
Yeah, this will be the last time that you see this committee on the agenda. We will no longer have this committee after tonight. It will all fall under the codes enforcement part with Mr. Burke and Mr. Nicely. Just wanted to let you all know, if you go on our website, the new codes enforcement law that went into effect, that we had to have in effect January 1, the registry is now on there. All the citations will be on there that get issued from January 1 forward. Also, a spreadsheet that's going to have every address that's had a codes violation on it will be there. That was part of the law that said we had to do that and had to put it out there. So if you go on our website, go over to the left-hand side, go under codes, and click on codes, and that's where you can find everything. So all the other cities have done it. If you look at Florence, you can see theirs too, the way it is. So it is a state law that went into effect January 1. Just wanted to let everybody know that we are complying with that, and everything is on there. We've set the new, there will be a codes enforcement board meeting. David, what was that date? We looked this morning. The 18th to swear in the new code enforcement board that was appointed, and to give them some preliminary kind of instructions about going forward with the attorneys and getting them, showing what exactly their roles will be in the enforcement of the new law that went into effect January 1. Having said that, we can close out that one. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. All right, you've heard the reports of our committees. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, then we've got the reports of our representatives. Are there any reports from the representatives this evening? Mrs. Skidmore?
I have a report on Kenton County Alliance. Actually, I did not get to attend the meeting today, but I do have some of the notes. There's a brochure that gets sent out every so often, it's called "What's Happening Kenton County?", and Kenton County Alliance has filled two pages of that brochure with articles for this publication. This effort should reach 70,000 residents in Kenton County.
Awesome.
The silhouette update, I don't know if you're familiar with that. Notre Dame has their banners displayed in their school, and then Kenton County Alliance is working with Simon Kenton High School, and the students have just completed their essays about why they choose to remain drug-free. And then they actually hang or post their silhouettes, because they're very, they have to be really careful about actually showing the real person.
Oh, okay.
So they do the silhouettes, and then last year, Joseph Beth Bookstore down in Crestview actually let them display the silhouettes there too. The metamorphosis update, that's the Butterfly Project, is moving right along. They have 11 sites now that are participating in this project, and it takes from the beginning of a moth, I guess it's a moth, until it actually metamorphoses into being a butterfly. And it helps the kids with their learning and self-esteem. And Lindeman Elementary School has passed a tobacco-free campus policy. Lindeman is the first school in the Earlanger-Elsmer School District to support a 24/7 tobacco-free campus policy. And they're working on signage for their campus. So I don't know if they've contacted Public Works yet or not. Sometimes they do. And then their, Kenton County Alliance is applying for the Drug-Free Communities Constitution Grant. And also Kenton County Alliance went to the Earlanger-Elsmer School Board meeting and discussed with the school board all the things that Kenton County Alliance is providing and doing and participating in. That's end of report.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great.
Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of city operations. City engineer, Mr. Vias, do you have anything to report this evening?
Only that was mentioned about two projects that are by Ed. Earlanger Road and Nelson Road Sidewalk. I'd like to point out both of those, you've already awarded contracts, but to contractors for both of those, and the contractors will be starting as early as they can in springtime. And they will both be finished into this budget period. That's all I have, sir.
All right, thank you. We've got the city attorney, Mr. Gatlin.
Yeah, Happy New Year to everyone. It's good to see everybody. If you're like me, normalcy returned to your life when your kids went back to school today, right? Or the kids you all watch?
Yeah.
There are two things that are on legislation tonight that I just want to bring to y'all's attention. One in particular, because there really has been no pre-discussion on it. There is a resolution tonight that we are seeking passage on, and it relates to the reissuing of revenue bonds that the city of Earlanger issued back in 2010 to UDF. We are the issuing agency. We have no liability on these bonds whatsoever, and these are not counted as debt to the city of Earlanger. This is somewhat of a housekeeping matter. Interest rates have dropped since 2010, so UDF wanted to refinance, and as a part of that, we have to be a part of it, because we were the initial issuers of these bonds. So tonight's resolution is merely just permitting Mayor Tyson Hermes to execute whatever documents are necessary, and they're fairly complicated. Bond Council for UDF is pretty intimately involved in this. Roger Peterman, who was involved in the first process. And again, I stress, the city of Earlanger is just the issuer. We have no liability, no recourse for anything on these debts. The second item is we are amending, there is an amendment to the tower lease agreement. The tower that's out there, Mr. Hahn, he probably should have talked about it in his report. He has been extremely diligent in researching what other cities are getting for their tower, and has negotiated a really good renewal of that lease. So this is a muni order that would allow, again, Mayor Tyson Hermes to enter the First Amendment to the tower lease agreement. This extends the term 20 years, which is pretty standard, and it gives a pretty significant rate bump up from what we currently are getting with rent escalators going forward over the next 20 years. And again, I can't stress enough the amount of time and effort that Mr. Hahn has put into this, and has negotiated a really good deal for the city. So that's what the two items are on legislation that I wanted to talk about.
All right, thank you. Next, we've got the city council attorney, Mr. Wickman.
I don't have anything to report, mayor.
All right. Then we've got the city administrator, Mr. Fields.
Just to follow up on what Mr. Wickman said about that lease, there was two communities that are surrounding us, one being Kenton County, one being the city of Florence, that just redid leases on their cell towers also, and the deal that Mr. Hahn got is better than what Kenton County and Florence got. So congratulations, Dave.
Good job, Dave.
It was a good job on that one. So the committee meetings, you know, we had talked a lot about the building assessment. So we want to do the audit in January. We're going to do, talking about the mayor's vision in January a little bit, and maybe the sidewalks. So I think having the building assessment that same night, which was already scheduled for, we need to push that back till February. That will also give us time to get that original committee together, that the mayor had made up, to look at that draft before we present it, have those, the company come in and present it to everybody. So moving that one to February may work. If not, we're going to be here an awful long time in January, because the audit will take a while. I'm sure the sidewalk will. I'm sure the vision will. So if we can move that one back, that may be better to do that.
That makes sense, yes.
Sure. Okay, all right. The only thing, we've covered pretty much everything. Anything I want to say? I want to relay a story, and the fire chief, I hope he's still here, he's hiding in the back.
Oh, he's sleeping.
Wake up. So Christmas night, about 5:30, I'm standing at my kitchen window, which faces the street. And it was foggy Christmas night, and my daughter-in-law, she walked up behind me, and she said, "I really don't think that's fog." She goes, "It looks awful thick." So as soon as I opened the door, I smelt the smoke and went out. And lo and behold, I look across the street, one up to the left, and there's a fire. And I see flames, and so I walked over, and as I'm calling dispatch, and I didn't use 911, because I remembered the old number so much and called the other one. But anyway, we got them en route, and lo and behold, it's a car that's in the driveway. It can't be more than four or five feet away from the garage door, burning, okay? Not smoking, it's burning, right? And even after all my career and all the things that I've done, I tend to back away when it started to crack and pop and carry on.
Yeah.
But I'm going to say this, and the crew got there, and I'm going to give Rob Hucker, Captain Hucker, a real kudos here. He jumped right out of the truck and ran right over to the car. While everybody else is hooking up hoses and doing all this stuff, I want to tell you, I have no desire to do that. I am awful glad that you all are here to do that. I appreciate it, and just those times when you need those people, and they're here that quickly to get that done, because I thought for sure the house was going to catch on fire. I mean, it was within four or five feet of that house, and it was fully engulfed by the time they got there and put it out. And my neighbor, you know, he kind of walked, "Well, it was smoking when I parked it." And I just, you know...
[laughing]
I thought it was overheating, and I didn't know it was on fire. I said, "Well, yeah, it might have been on fire." So anyway, I want to thank you all, and know that, you know, that when you watch them in action and you see them do those kind of things, I have no desire to get, to walk into. And you talked about the house in Fort Mitchell burning. No. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, you've heard the reports of our representatives and city operations. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next we've got correspondence. Mrs. Hoffman, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No, sir.
All right. Then we'll move on to the citizen public comments. Yeah, I am. First up, we've got, and you know you don't need to sign up to talk, but we've got Patty Sudcamp.
Oh, for God's sake. [laughing]
Happy New Year to you two, Kevin.
Happy New Year. You know I love you.
Yeah, yeah. Tell it to him, Ralph. [laughing] Thank you for this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to speak to the citizens of Earlanger. I wanted to publicly apologize for the embarrassment that this local election caused this community. I've lived in Earlanger for 46 years. I've been a volunteer with this city for 36 years, been on council 20 years. I never, ever dreamt that anything like this would happen in my city. I was embarrassed, I was humiliated, and I just felt that with it being a new year, this was the only way that I could put it behind me, because I know the people that created the discord will never, ever come forward. I would like a quote from Joshua Feierstein, and it summed up the election perfectly for me. I'd like to share it with you. "When a toxic person can no longer control you, they will try and control how others see you. This information will feel unfair, but we must stay above that and trust other people will eventually see the truth, like you all did. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the perfect scenario of the past election. Trust in proven members of your city council were embarrassed, humiliated, and disgraced by the total deceit of one toxic person. Proudly I state, we all stood together above it, not for us, but for you and our fine city. There seems to be a rumor the council became adversaries due to the fact there were two tickets. That could not be further from the truth, ladies and gentlemen, that separate tickets came from two years ago, when some members chose to run as husband and wife and mother and son, period. Don't read anything else into that. It was just another ploy to confuse the issues. As your elected officials, we are here to serve this fine city as always, and we are honored to do so. So I am praying for less drama and more productivity in 2007, and God bless you and this fine city."
All right. Next, we've got Ann Isaac. Welcome.
Happy New Year, and congratulations to everybody on being elected and re-elected. As you may remember, I spoke a couple times last year about the advantages of raising backyard chickens, and it was discussed here and there, but it was more or less, the issue was tabled because, it was tabled because we couldn't come to a consensus. And I just want to let you know that I'm still here, and I'm still advocating for raising backyard chickens. I think it's a wonderful hobby. It's a growing phenomenon in the United States, and everybody benefits from it. And I hope this year we'll have better luck with, you know, trying to get some things established. Once again, Happy New Year, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
All right, then we've got Nanette Wildabor.
I'm just up here, I was here at the last meeting about closing perimeter at Stevenson Road, and I know the surveys went out, and on December 19th was the deadline to turn them back in. Well, I told you all I'd go door-to-door and get everybody's... I did not get a chance to do that. Number one, it was cold. Number two, I got sick. And then Christmas and the holidays, I wasn't going to go bother anybody. It's too busy, too busy time of the year. So I don't know what decision's been made, I don't know if anything's been done about it, but I would like an extension to be able for me, myself, to go out and talk to the neighbors and get the surveys in. I know someone else has gotten some in, but I just don't think it's a good idea. It's a public safety issue that ambulance and fire will have to go all the way around if something would happen, and I just don't understand the reasoning behind it, and I would just like to get an extension before you guys make a full decision on what you want to do with that. I haven't talked to Joe, so I don't know what has gone on there. I just know on the 19th, some more were turned in for a yes to close that road. Like I said, I've lived in Earlanger most of my life, grew up here, and it's never been an issue until now. And I don't understand it, so...
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not really, it's not like it's something that we are just deciding on. I think at this point, the survey is put out there to see if there's even any interest in that, in us at least exploring it more. There's still a lot more to it. It's not, it's not an easy answer, it's not an easy fix necessarily. So, yeah, there's still a whole lot more to it. But yeah, we appreciate your efforts, and if you, I don't think we've got any necessary time limit of when we can accept those, so if you can, if you want to get more and talk to more people, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm going to probably wait until most of the summer, the winter's over. It's just too cold for me to go out there, and people were, I'd rather talk to them if they're out of their home, you know?
Sure.
Somebody coming up to your house that don't, you don't, I don't know everybody on perimeter. I know the ones on the lower end, but not the higher end, and like knowing stuff, and just a stranger walking up to your door and knocking on it, some people aren't going to answer. You know, so I feel in the warmer weather, people are going to be outside doing things in their yard. I might have a better opportunity of approaching. I just didn't know what the timeframe was for any of that, and honestly cannot believe that anybody even said yes to block that road.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got Mr. Mark Astonfelder.
Hello. Thank you. Well, thanks for having me. I see some new faces. Just since I've been starting to come to the city meetings, I've learned a lot from coming to the city meetings since August 2nd. That was my first meeting, so I've been here since August 2nd. And as it started, and this isn't like my dream option, I think when I first mentioned this, we had trouble with people running a stop sign, which I don't have the exact date, I'll talk to Rick Bogart about that, but I think it's been in for over three years, three years back to September. So it's been in for quite a while, and that all came up due to, we were getting so many speeders, and it was something to slow, slow people down. And they've got that stop sign back on the back part of perimeter as it wraps around to that road that goes up to just the few big houses back there in the big neighborhood. And I was, you know, and I asked, "Why do they have the stop sign when we don't have it here, and everybody uses this road, and we get so much traffic?" So that's what they came up with, because there was a mention that in Earlanger, we can't put up speed humps. And there was the mention of, you know, the speed humps tear up the snowplows, which I understand they probably do, and the fire trucks. I was talking to the fire chief, and, you know, and that's something that we can, you know, discuss further, but it wasn't just that we closed it down, it was, could we change it to a one-way this way, or that way, or, you know, you know, to keep it safer, maybe to slow, to keep people from coming into the neighborhood. So this was one of the options that was considered, and I'm open to suggestions. I do agree, we do need more time. I have been out, even in the cold weather, and it is a long process. I do agree, we do need more time. My philosophy when I went out to these people, and I would talk to them, was they sent out 182. The only fair way is to get 182 back, and that's the way I feel, because the only way you get a true judge of anything in this world is if everybody puts in their information. And I think, do you have the numbers? I think it was...
I don't.
I think it was 75 yeses, 38 no's, and five neathers. And I can say, based on my maps, I haven't been to every home. And I think that we need to include all of Hallam, all the way down, because, you know, if something like this was to, we'll just say, close that into perimeter, it's going to affect those people all the way down Hallam, because they're going to see less traffic. Now, I do agree, there is issues with, you know, where does the fire department come from? Where did the police come from? And that's something that we'll have to take up with the fire chief and the police chief, and see if there's ways to look at this a little bit better. I know some of the other, you know, some of the people that I've talked to actually say that there are neighborhoods that will have, not around here, will have a radio gate, a gate that is controlled by the police and the fire, that when they come, it'll actually open, based on a radio, they punch in a, you know, a few digits on the radios, gate comes open. And that's one thing. Another thing that I'll mention, it's probably been, I got a friend that lives out in Fort Mitchell, and there's a neighborhood that's kind of, there's a road that comes up the backside, and I'm trying to get more information on it. Comes up from Walmart down there in Fort Wright, and there's a neighborhood that comes off of Dixie Highway. And you might, I might even talk to you, you might be able to point me in the right direction, sir, the fire chief. But the fire department... At the back ends, so they could get through if need be. Well, the neighbors voted it down because of the traffic in and outflow going from Walmart to Dixie Highway would increase, and they didn't want to do that. So, you know, there's a, you know, when you live on a side street, like you do at Crestline or somebody up at Lake Knoll, they sit there and go, "I don't see that traffic." But based on, wow, the people that do, can we slow them down? Why are they coming through our neighborhoods? They don't need to be there. Years ago, it was a neighborhood. There wasn't the traffic volume that we have. A lot of this problem stems from Stevenson Road isn't adequate to handle the volume that it needs. So what do they do? They come through our neighborhood. So years ago, the kids could go out there, and they could ride bikes, and they could play. Now you got to watch it, because they just, they don't consider stop signs what they're meant to be anymore. So they fly through our neighborhoods, and it's usually not our neighbors, because if your child or somebody who lives on that road leaves their bike outside, is your neighbor going to steal that bike when it's left out all night at 2:00 in the morning? No, it's the guy that drives through goes, "Oh, I'm going to throw this in the back of my truck." Do they need to be there? I had a lady that lived on Lake Knoll, she said years ago, she had somebody break in her house while she was there, she called the police. The police came. He was already gone. It's because we have a back door. There's a back door to our neighborhood. Most of these neighborhoods built today, one way in, one way out. Which way are the police coming in? The police are coming in the back doors or going out the back, they're coming in the front doors or going out the back. So there are goods, there's pros and cons to... Most of these neighborhoods built today, one way in, one way out. Which way are the police coming in? The police are coming in the back doors or going out the back. They're coming in the front doors or going out the back. So there are goods, there's pros and cons to both sides, I see them. But I think with the numbers, you're seeing a lot of people that are tired of all the traffic through our neighborhood. And I really think that we need to survey even further down Hallam because we stopped halfway. Why stop halfway? It affects all those people. They see that traffic all day long. So I think we need to include more, I think we need more time. And I think we need to present it more, it's just not a dangerous exit to get out of. It's, we want our neighborhood back, a lot of us do. We want our neighborhood back. We're not Stevenson Road, we're not Dixie Highway, and we're not Turkeyfoot Road. The real problem is Stevenson Road can't handle the volume. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aston Felder.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As new members, we don't even know what they're talking about. I would assume it's been discussed before.
It has.
Yeah, we don't know what they're talking about. Can we be informed a little more?
Yeah, I, instead of going into it this evening, I think we, this might be good for us to table until a committee meeting and we can discuss it more then. This is something that's been ongoing for, what do we want to say, six months?
That was August 2nd.
Okay.
August 2nd, I think it was November.
Yeah.
I didn't think November actually worked that much.
We can talk about it more, you know, maybe, maybe off the record here. But it's a, it's perimeter, has a lot of traffic. And we've looked at the opportunity of, I'm sorry, not just perimeter, but.
No.
But any warning tonight, I'd like to give.
Hallam, yeah, thank you.
I think it was Kim Blair and a couple other officers that actually said, the one one year ago, we've talked about this before, but they said, they were ten people in one half. That weren't just like all approved, they were just all approved. And I agree, I mean, did you call?
Oh, every, every stop sign in every, every community. We can discuss it more after the meeting. Yeah.
I mean, I'm a late guy.
Yeah, Don, if you're going to speak, you need to put your mic on, for one, so we can hear you. But we can talk more about it. This is, this is public comment, this isn't necessarily something that we were planning on talking about. So you haven't received any kind of report on it. We can discuss it more after the meeting. Okay, then next we have George Ed Nordeley. Okay. All right. Then the next item on our agenda is bids. Mrs. Hoffman, Mr. Vioxx, any bids?
No, sir.
Okay, discuss, all right. Any old business? Does anybody have any unfinished business to discuss? All right, any new business?
I do.
All right.
I'd like to add to the committee meeting on the seventeenth, discussion about the chickens.
Okay.
Please.
All right, thank you. All right, then we've got, under legislation, first is municipal order regarding the cell tower lease.
Yeah, this is the resolution that I discussed in my report. This is a municipal order of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with PTI US Towers One LLC related to the City of Earlanger cell tower. This, in summary, is a renewal of the current lease that we have. And it extends the term by twenty years. And it's the, at the great rates negotiated by Mr. Hahn.
All right, do I entertain a motion to adopt as presented? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mrs. Skidmore. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried. Next is a municipal order regarding the appointments to the PDS Council.
This is a municipal order number one dash oh-three dash seventeen dash oh-two. A municipal order of the City Council of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the reappointment of Mayor Tyson Hermes as the representative of the city to Northern Kentucky Planning Development Services. And Councilmember Randy Blankenship is the alternate. This appointment is for a one-year term.
All right, do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cahill, second by Mrs. Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a municipal order regarding the council committee assignments.
That's a municipal order of the City Council of the City of Earlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, establishing committees and the membership thereof, authorizing the referral or two of the recommendations and on the subject presented to the City Council for their consideration. Each of you have a copy of it, there's no legal requirement to read the entire municipal order, so we're ready for a vote.
All right, do I entertain a motion? Motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mrs. Kyle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next is a resolution, the reissue of the industrial rapid bonds for UDF.
This is resolution number oh-one dash oh-three dash seventeen dash one. A resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a first supplemental bond purchase agreement and first supplemental loan agreement in connection with the outstanding City of Earlanger, Kentucky Industrial Building Revenue Bonds, Series 2010, which is the United Dairy Farmers Project. To reiterate, this is a refinancing of the December tenth obligation. This debt is between the borrower and the lender. We, as City of Earlanger, are merely the issuer. We have no personal liability, and it does not increase any debt or tax pledge to us. Do need a vote.
All right. Do I entertain a motion? We adopt as read. Motion by Mrs. Sudcamp, second by Mrs. Skidmore. I think that was the second one I saw. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Kyle, second by Mr. Nicely. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.